Got it. So I think Tony's calling in to the regular number, so I'll just need to move him over once. Or Angie will need to look at his phone number and move him over once we open it up.
Okay, I we are streaming live now and I'm gonna start it right now if you're ready.
Yep, and he's his his last four should be six, four, seven, three on his phone number.
Got it.
You move him over.
Okay.
And he I think that's him, the first one on the list.
Mm hmm. So I think I can only allow him to talk because it's the phone, it won't let me move him, so I'll just make sure he's allowed to talk the whole time.
Okay. Oh, there he is, I see him.
Okay.
Hey, hey, Tony, you want to check your audio?
Check one, two, three.
Yeah.
You guys hear me?
Yeah, yes, we can.
And I'll rename you.
All right, and I think we are live and ready to go now, we actually have only one member of the public. Swanee's on the on the call so far, so we will give people one or two minutes for other people to join on them, we'll get started. We may have people watching live on Facebook, right, Angie?
Right.
Okay, I do, it does look like there's a couple people on Facebook, so we will get started with the the presentation tonight, so welcome to the community who's joining us tonight for our town hall workshop. We tonight's, the purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide an update on water in Morgan Hill and our 2020 urban water management plan update. So just gonna do some quick introductions for the team that's on the on the call tonight. I myself, I'm Chris Guinea, Public Services Director for the City of Morgan Hill. And also joining us on the call tonight and helping present will be James Sylvain. He is our Deputy Director for Utilities. Who's who's with us and then also supporting with questions as needed, we'll have Anthony Yulo, our Program Administrator, as well as Jennifer Carmen, our Development Services Director. And of course, Angie Gonzalez, our Deputy City Clerk here as well, so just wanna get that started, I'm gonna pull up a quick slideshow, we have about a presentation that's probably between twenty and thirty minutes. If we if we move quickly and then we'll go through that and then open it up to general questions from the community. How does my oh, you know what? Think I skipped a step, sorry about that. Share my screen correctly. That look okay, James' presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so as I mentioned, we're here to talk about the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, which is a plan we as Morgan Hill have to, as a water retailer, have to update every every five years. Why it is 2020 and this is 21, it usually takes, it is developed after the year, so all the water retailers are developing their plan this year, we're not a year behind in developing our plan, just wanted make that clear. What we're gonna cover tonight is just an introduction and background on the city's water system and then actually, James will go into detail on how the city's water system works as well as what our groundwater supply levels are, then I will talk a little bit about water conservation and recycled water. And then we'll talk about different upcoming upcoming opportunities to participate in the conversation about water in our community. So a little bit of background, the City of Morgan Hill, we are a water retailer and we are a local government. So we as local government, we have enforcement authority and that's important when we're talking about conservation and rules being set for water conservation. We often hear that Valley Water says, you know, there should be this conservation level, but the individual cities like us are the ones who enforce the the water conservation rules that that we have put together. What Valley Water is, they're the water wholesaler, they're the ones we buy the groundwater from. And they're also the groundwater management agency, so they manage the 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 groundwater, that's their responsibility. Morgan Hill is, Morgan Hill Water that comes to your house or business is 100% groundwater. And we pull those from two different aquifers, one to the north of us and the Coyote Coyote Valley and one that extends from Morgan Hill South, which is the Yagas Sub Basin. And we rely on Valley Water to recharge those groundwater basins in both locations, they are not just recharged by rainfall and natural recharge, we actually rely on them to do that. And we pay for that water that we pull out of the ground, we often refer to that as a pump, a pump tax. But the city actually pays for that and then passes along that cost to our our customers who are paying for water service. So one thing we really want to make clear through this presentation is when it comes to water supply, water conservation and water as a scarce resource, this is it's managed in a shared fashion, none of us can do this alone at this point. And so communities across the state rely on important imported water and we're no different. We rely on Valley Water, as I mentioned, to recharge the aquifers. And Valley Water purchases imported water and brings that to Santa Clara County to recharge our aquifers and to provide to the water retailers in the north. And 55% of the water used in our county is imported, so more than half of the water used is imported from outside the county. And this is just a quick slide that shows the Yagas Sub Basin. And and what the uses are of that aquifer, so the aquifer being underground storage area. We as Morgan Hill withdraw about 8,000 acre feet a year from that aquifer. But as you can see, as you look to the numbers to the right, we have recharged by Valley Water and natural recharge listed in green. And then the withdrawals, and you'll see to the far right, the withdrawals that come from Gilroy, which is about 10,000 acre feet a year, but by far the biggest draw on the aquifer are the users, ag users or users who have their own wells that are outside both the City of Morgan Hill and the City of Gilroy, actually more than both of them combined. So it just even further identifies that even in our own individual aquifer, it's a shared resource. And then just are we charge customers about $16,000 annually to run and operate our system and that includes the money to pay Valley Water for the water we withdraw from the aquifer. And that's about $4 million annually that we pay them. What we also want to make clear is we do not use your rates as customers who are paying for 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 water and management of our system, we don't use those rates to build build out the system for development, we collect impact fees from developers to pay for any expansions to the system that are needed to expand the system to support that that growth in the community. And there are several components that we use to plan our water system. The first one we're talking about today is the Urban Water Management Plan that we do every five years, we are now actually required to include a separate document, which is the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. And that is now available in draft form with the Urban Water Management Plan. And then we have a Water Supply Master Plan, which is a little different, and that talks about the infrastructure and the system needs, we need to 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 build out our system for the future as well as replacement of the aging components of the system. And it those are the base for our user fees as well as our impact fees. And then usually after completing the water the Water Supply Master Plan Update, we would do a water rate study every three to five years is required for us to do that study to look at the rates that are charged to the customers. And I'm gonna turn it over to James to take the next section.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening. Like Chris mentioned, I will be talking about a water system setup. Those are the major facilities that we use to move, store and get water that you as the resident use either at your house or or businesses. So basically, can you go to the next page, Chris? I will be moving to that real quick, like Chris mentioned before. We get our water from two sub-basins. They are the Yagas Basin and the Coyote Basin. And all of our water came from those two basins. Next slide, please. We actually have 16 wells that we use to pull water from the ground. And three of them are located, pull their water from the Coyote Basin. And 13 others get their water from the Yagas Basin. They have collectively a capacity of 13 million gallons of water per day. And those wells, they range from 16, from 10 to 16 inches in diameter. And they are about 3 to 380 feet deep. Next. Slide please. We also have 12 storage tanks and those are scattered throughout the city. Collectively, again, they have a total capacity of 10.2 million gallons. And those are our storage tanks, they play a critical role in that they stored or treated water that is distributed throughout the system. And because of that, they allow us to have enough water to distribute even when we were when we experience emergencies. Our staff can respond to those emergency and we have enough time to process or treat new water as a result of those storage tanks. Next slide, please. Again, we have 10 booster station that are throughout the city again, those are stations they use to pressurize the system. So we can fill those storage tanks and move water throughout the transmission line, those transmissions now they are the larger pipe diameter size that are used to transmit water from one zone to the next. The distribution lines are the lines that smaller in diameters that goes to businesses and to your homes. Next slide please. We have a total of about 175 miles of pipe of different sizes that we use as transmission line and distribution schedule to deliver treated water to those homes and businesses. Or we have dedicated staff that, as you can see here, that take care of those pipelines. When we have a break or a leak, those are the staff that respond to those emergencies. Next. We have what we call a SCADA system, which is a supervisory control and data acquisition system. What it allows us to do is monitor the system 24 hours, seven days a week. We know specifically the water level at the wells at any time. We collected those datas, that's what allow us to make decision when we need to start a well or start a pump. So we can pump water to one way, to one area or to the next or when to turn it off. So this, all of those subsystems that I talked to previously have electrical and communication associated with them, which allow us to monitor monitor them 24/7. Next slide please. Now let's talk about the well capacity. Last year of those 16 wells, we have the capability of moving or pull from the ground 18,600 acre feet of water. So the recharge options that we have are very limited. As you know, like with everything else, the wells, you are pulling water from the aquifer. Over time, the level will go down. So there's a few things we can do to recharge the aquifer, the ones that we are currently doing, being in a drought is being recharged from imported water that Chris mentioned earlier. And that is done by Valley Water, they are responsible for the recharging the aquifer. So that's one way to do it, the other way is to do that naturally through rainwater, of course, and the other, there is another way is through that reclaim water. And you basically take water from the wastewater and to different levels of treatment. You can either have the option to inject it back into the aquifer. They call that indirect reuse, portable reuse, or you can do a higher level of treatment and put it right back into the distribution system. And they call that a direct portable reuse. So last, for the last few years, if you look on the right inside of your page, you will see some chart. And it shows for the previous years how much water Valley Water uses to recharge the aquifer. And for 2021, which is the line in blue, you can see that we are less water was being used for recharge, is being used right now for recharge. And again, that is because we are in a drought, there's not much water available for us to be able to or be at a higher level. Next. Or slide please. So what as staff, what are we doing to ensure that we have water on a continuous basis for our resident? Well, we constantly have meetings with Valley Water to ensure that the aquifer is being recharged. And they are doing a good job at helping us with that on that front. With regard to our future projects that we have, well, we are looking at all options, including recycle water as a new water supply for our community. 2017 Master Plan calls for us to build two wells within the next 10 years. We start exploring that possibility right now as we speak. We also are looking at building additional pipelines to be able to move water from one zone from to another zone. We do have that capability right now, but we want to increase that to improve reliability and redundancy. We're looking at that right now. We also are increasing our reservoirs. I mentioned earlier, we have 10 of those storage tanks, we have we are looking at improving the existing one that we have. We plan also on upsizing two of the existing one from 0.1 million gallon to 0.25 million gallon. So we are working, looking at all options to ensure that the community have water when they need it. Our next slide please. Now, what I will show you next on the next two slides are the current water level for the wells that we have. Like I mentioned earlier, we have eight, 16 wells, well, we 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 don't take a graphical representation of each, but what we do, we do take graphical representation of one well from each basin. And we look at the profile of those were over the last eight years, which included the last drought that we have in the 2015, 16. Okay, so the two wells we're gonna look at is the Boys Ranch, well, number one, and Diana well, number two. Next slide please. So this is the first graph, if you look at the bottom, each color is associated with a year. And if say, for example, you're looking at the year 2014, that will be the yellow. And the way to read that graph is looking from the like zero is the ground level and you're looking down. If I'm looking at the the month of January for 2014, and I will see that the water level for was at 180 feet below ground level, that's what it was. So let's fast forward to 2021. That is the brown graph. And you can see up to 20, August of, which is last month. You can see where we are, we are pretty much at the same place where we were in 2014. So that's why conservation is called that we continue to conserve water because we are getting very close. But what does that mean though, does that mean that we're gonna be running dry, not necessarily? But it's good to preserve wherever we can. And next slide please, let's go to the next one. If you look at this particular graph is from the Yagas Basin and that is Diana well, number one. And you can see we are in a much better shape with regard to this basin. You can see we are way above where we were in 2015, 2014. We are way above the green and the yellow graph. Next, next slide please. One, one, one slide back. Thank you. Now let's look at a service area. We have currently based on the 2020 census, a population of 46,000 people and we have currently over 14,000 connections. And the next slide, Chris, if you will, showed what we have as far as the breakdown in percentage of our service connection. As you can see, the largest are the single family residential, which is 74%. And the next one after that will be the multi-family, which is at 16%. If you look on the other side of the of the page, you will see that we have the water use and also we have the breakdown as in percentage as well as far as what, how much water is being used by each of those demographics? If you look at what is interesting in this is if you look at on the connection side, you see irrigation is a 5%. And if you go to the water usage, you will see that it's at 17%. So you can see there's a big increase in usage by our us irrigating. So that's, that's the percentage of 17%, whereas all the single family, which is about 75%, 74% connection. But we only have 51% usage. So next slide please. Okay, so what is the outlook for moving in the future, 20, 25 years down the road? What we see is a supply versus our demand and compare those. And when you look at what is available, that is per basin. This is for Yagas Basin. You can see Morgan Hill, what our projected demand will be for the Yagas Basin, that will be 6,800 acre feet. And for the total basin supply, we have 47,000 acre feet. And the difference is about 340 acre feet based on our total demand, that includes DROI, City of DROI, other users like agricultural users. You can see the difference is not that far apart, you can see it's only 354 acres. Next slide. That's for Yagas, I'm looking at 2025, this one is for Coyote. And again, you can see for Morgan Hill, we have 1,800 acre feet. And the same thing. We don't, we do not have City of DROI here in this particular basin, using this particular basin, however, we have other users that using it. And again, we have, the differences are only, I'm looking at 2025, it's only 1,300 acre feet. So that, that is the outlook for each basin as to what the supplies is projected to be versus what our demand will be. Next slide please. So what we can say is that for 2020, we supply 7,800 acre feet, which averaged to about 7 million gallon per day. So our target was 159 gallon per capita demand. We actually get was able to accomplish 150 gallon per capita demand. So that tells us that we meet our goals. And if you look at where we are today versus what we are, the ability, our firm capacity for all the basins, which is 16,000 acre feet per year, you can see that we can meet our current demand. However, we're not just working for today, we have to look at long term. However, we're not just working for today, we have to look at long term. And that's why we're asking everyone to do whatever they can to, to do to conserve. While we as staff are doing whatever we can to make sure that we have the water available for you when you need it. And we have the infrastructure ready for when that demand increases. Thank you. That's all I have. I think Chris will take questions after the presentation.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, we'll couple more sections to run through, then we'll be on to questions. I know we have a couple in the chat, but we'll get those. We'll answer those when we're, we're done. And we're gonna jump into just the water conservation section of the presentation and how we use, how we use our water, our current approach to water conservation and the new updated recommended approach. That's part of the proposed water shortage contingency plan. And then we're talking about planning for a sustainable water supply. And just want to show this slide first. So this is the average monthly water use for Morgan Hill. And you can see the water use in July and August is nearly triple what it is in the winter months of say, January. And the reason for that is really simple. That's, that's irrigation water. So there's not a big change in use other than irrigation not happening in the winter. So that's the opportunity. And the target for conservation starts with irrigation because it makes up such a big, the big difference in what is used. The other kind of key point we want to hit on with water conservation, this is, this is a a chart that compares our water use annually by year to our population. So you see the red line and the population increasing from the mid thirty thousands to where we are now, getting close to above forty five thousand. And the water use has actually remained relatively stable. And where we are in twenty twenty is less than we were many, many, many years ago. So that population growth doesn't necessarily equate to increased water use. It hasn't done that in the past. This is the daily water use per person on a year by year basis. And as you can see, we are using far less per person as James just mentioned with our, our goal. This is the average per capita across the city than we were, you know, in a decade ago or so. So this slide shows what our current water shortage levels are and relating to our, you know, our, our drought planning. And as, as you know, we are in, we are moving through the levels and we are in a level two shortage right now, based on the city's current municipal code. And that's why watering is limited to two days a week right now on, on your irrigation as well as many other, other things going on. What we are proposing in the update to the water shortage contingency plan is going to change that a little bit. You know, the permanent water race rules that we have, even when we're not in the drought, we, we currently limit watering to a certain number of days a week, three days a week during normal conditions during the summer months, which is now down to two because of the drought. And we don't allow excessive water flow or runoff. And there's many other things that we require on an ongoing base, ongoing basis. And these are permanent restrictions that the City of Morgan Hill has put in place. Not every community does that, but this is the starting point that we have for permanent water waste rules. Now, our current levels, level one does not equate to much change. And as I just mentioned, level two, where we're at, we're reduced to two day irrigation. Now, level three, which is the currently the top level for water conservation, doesn't allow any irrigation at all. So we've moved from two days a week to no irrigation. Limits on serving new development and then there's no rationing or allocation or emphasis on enforcement. So it's kind of a, a nuclear approach to irrigation. What we're proposing now with the, with the updated water shortage contingency plan is a scale that is in, goes in more detail by, and you can see it's broken down by the conservation level going from ten percent to twenty percent, thirty to forty to fifty. And this is actually in line with state recommendations and might provide some consistency with other communities that are following the, the, what the state has, has put together as, as the model. But it actually allows us to incrementally increase the requirements for conservation in a, in a more intentional fashion. So we, we go from the, the three current levels to the, the six, six current level to the six new levels. And we're gonna go through what each of those, each of those mean. As right now, the thirty percent, we would be in a level three on the, the, the new, the new in the new level system. So level zero is basically what we have now, right? So that, you know, it, it's what we have now in our ongoing water conservation measures that we talked about. Now, when we would, then these are all the, the ongoing measures. When we get to level one, that's when we would start a communication campaign telling people to conserve water. And that's up to the, the ten percent, the, the ten percent water reduction target. Level two, we would, we would increase communications directly to all users as it relates to leaks and high, and high water users. And level three, that would, as I mentioned, get us to where we are now. And that would be actively enforcing and limiting water or irrigations of lawns and other vegetated areas to the three times a week, oh, sorry, so three times a week. At level four, we'll move to the two times per week, mix that up a little bit. And prohibits the car washing, all those things that we're now prohibiting now. And then level four moves that to the irrigation down to two times per week. And now the, the bigger steps would happen when we move to level five. And that would be active enforcement on the, on the watering and, and we would actually begin limiting the watering or irrigation of trees and shrubs to one time per week, March through October. So if we move to level five, which would be the forty percent mark, that would mean that there would be no irrigation of, of a lot of things. And the things can be irrigated would be limited to one day per week. So this would also, once we get to level five, there would be potentially the building moratorium or a net zero demand increase on new connections, which would mean that any new users would have to offset their water use by reducing water used somewhere else in the community. And there would be at level five, there'd be no irrigation of turf except for major public facilities for the community to use. So basically at level five, there'd be no more watering of turf. And then at level six, there'd be no irrigation on any, any areas. So that would be the new more phased approach that we're proposing for the, the water shortage contingency plan. So Tony Ulo, who usually presents this section, would tell you and will tell you if he jumps in that our sustainable water supply, it's changing and it's because of climate change. And, and we have risks ahead of us, but it's not just us in Morgan Hill. It's, it's across the state. So we have to know that. So our future, we are looking ahead to recycled water, which we'll talk about in a minute. We are looking at the potential for a drought rate schedule would be a new tool we possibly implement from the city as well as the use of penalty rates, which would be for users exceeding certain amounts. These are things we're looking at, not things that have been set in stone yet. But as the drought continues, these are things the city will be looking at as well as water offsets, which I mentioned, that would be, water offsets would be used to require new development to find savings in water use within the existing community to offset the new water use that that bring forward. So those are strategies we're talking about. I'm gonna jump right into recycled water so we can get to everyone's questions. So the city is actively looking at it. And we have two big plans we're looking at that are already in place. One is the South County Recycled Water Master Plan that's tied to the wastewater treatment plant we share with Gilroy. And the other one is the countywide reuse master plan that Valley Water has put together. And they have put together for, between those plans, there's four different options to bring different levels of recycled water to Morgan Hill, all of which we are, we are actively discussing and pursuing feasibility on in partnership with, with Valley Water. And our plans for the near term are to continue to explore those, those opportunities with recycled water in partnership. And then look at the new technology and new things that are coming forward and being allowed or, or anticipated to be allowed in the state in the future, which includes, you know, recycled water from a treatment facility for our wastewater going directly into potable, potable drinking water through purified, a purification system. And as I mentioned, the guidelines for that are currently underway. So we're really, we're really exploring all of those options. Now, next steps for us when it comes to water, the urban water management plan was presented to the council earlier this month, but will be scheduled for final review and adoption on October sixth. We're continuing to monitor the drought situation and we'll be updating the, the water, updating the city's response for conservation as needed as we go through this winter. We're gonna continue working with Valley Water on our drought contingency planning. And that includes working with them on, as it relates to the non-city users, those that are outside the city that we don't have control of because we share the aquifers with them. We're gonna continue and try to accelerate, accelerate our work on recycled water. And we're gonna be coming back to the city council in late twenty twenty one with an update on our water system master plan, which will be followed by the water rate study in early twenty twenty two. And the water rate study, that is something that has to be done every, at, at intervals so that we can legally charge for the water that we provide to, to you all. With that, we are gonna go to questions. And if you'd like to ask a question, you can do so by either raising your hand. If you're an attendee, it looks like all of our attendees are on Zoom. I don't see any phone numbers, so you can just raise your hand to do that. And while we're waiting for people to raise their hands, we have two questions in the chat that we can start by answering. The first one I'll answer that, and it's from Swanee and wondering if the present, presentation will be made available to residents. And yes, we will get this posted on our website. And we can send that to you via email as well, so we, we can definitely do that. The second question I'm gonna read out for the group, and I think James can probably take this question. But there are, the question is, the two planned new wells will draw from Coyote or Yagas Sub Basin? I think the question is, will they draw from the Coyote or Yagas Sub Basin? And how long can we pump without recharge and be assured of water availability in the future?
Yes, so I will take the, this question. Well, the first part of the question is the two wells, we are exploring sites currently. And the options is whether or not we're gonna use the Coyote Basin or the Yagas Basin. We have currently a consultant that we work with, looking at the feasibility of those areas and see, based on their recommendation, whether or not we're gonna put them in, which basin basically we're gonna be using. It's not final yet, it's, it's in early stage right now. They are doing exploratory site visit right now to see which area is best to put those well. But there's a possibility they may, if, if they had put them in the Yagas Sub Basin, more than likely, there will be a lot of piping work involved. We're looking at all of those, there may be an additional booster station. We're looking at all options right now. With regard to, do we have, first of all, we do not have to run all the wells to meet our demand currently. That's the first thing. Will we have enough water in the future? We're looking at those. It will be, my, my answer to that will be if we do everything that we need to do, or, or, or like conserve water, acts, do what we're supposed to do, like, not just us, but all other communities. The answer is yes, we will. And currently, we do have enough water to meet our demand. Like I showed in the graph, we, last year, we used seventy eight hundred acre feet. And we have the capability to do almost twice. Like that's sixteen thousand acre feet. So that will be the answer. I hope I answer all the, I hope I answer the question.
Yeah, I think, I think you got that, James. So I think we've answered all the questions in the chat. If there's any other questions, please feel free to add them either to the chat or just raise your hand and we'll answer them live. And while we're doing that, we will just make an announcement. If you want to come talk to James and I in person about, about water, we will be at the farmer's market this Saturday from nine to noon. And we'll have a booth there with the city booth and the subject will be on water and the urban water management plan. So feel free to, to come by this Saturday. And if you'd rather talk one on one in person, we'll be there to answer questions. Okay, well, I don't see any other questions coming up immediately, so. Swanee says she'll see us Saturday, so we'll, we'll see her there. And if there's no more questions, we will end the, end the meeting for tonight. Awesome, thanks for, thanks for those that attended online.
Thank you, everyone.